Mr. Leclerc.
Here.
Please stand and join me in a moment of silence and the pledge. Keep in mind tonight, all the people who are suffering in Ukraine. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. Begin tonight with a presentation from the Hamlet Middle School, and welcome.
Welcome, everyone. Whoa. See, I didn't need this thing. Welcome to Hamlet Middle School. My name is Ms. Renegaldo. I am the principal at Hamlet Middle School. Tonight, we are going to present to you an eighth-grade science lesson. So first, I'm going to go over the why and how. This is something that our teachers strive to do at Hamlet Middle School. They let the kids know what they're learning, why they're learning it, and how they're going to demonstrate their learning. And I have six helpers tonight from Hamlet Middle School, seventh and eighth graders. They're going to be partnering up with members of the school committee to go through four, well, no, sorry, five stations. It's a station notation activity. And my students are going to be the recorders, and the school committee members are going to give the answers. So I hope you brought your eighth-grade science brains with you to the school committee tonight. You're going to be tested. So we're going to start.
Well, for those of you listening at home on the radio, just know that we're going to be going, the school committee members are going to be going from station to station with one of the sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders, and hopefully we do well.
Thirty seconds at each station. So I hope your brains are on for this tonight. So Nina, Ronnie, Asia, get your partner and go to your station. So once you guys get to your stations, you're going to have thirty seconds.
I'm going to fill in.
I'm sorry.
There's less pressure on you then, right?
No.
Not at all.
From Sturgis?
Yes.
So please, um, about the South Pacific. What has been the problem with you?
Thank you. Vice Chair Burke.
Vice Chair Burke. At least we're getting a taste of these salads tonight. We got something to bring home.
Right.
Finally, Mr. Chairman, and members of the school committee, I want to recognize and congratulate the Windsocket Education Department for winning the state championship. They've done a great job. They've got a great team. They've got a great staff. They've got a great team. They've got a great staff. And we're going to thank them for their hard work. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. And we're going to thank them for their dedication. And we're going to thank them for their commitment to the school. Excited tonight. I'm excited because this is an opportunity for the Windsocket Education Department to show off the positive things that are happening in our district. And I'm really excited to see the news here. So there, I hope they got a lot of what we just did with our amazing Hamlet Middle School students, because those are the positive things that are happening in the Windsocket Education Department. Our teachers and our students work extremely hard, and you just saw it. Dr. Holt, myself, and many educators and administrators in our district, and I've talked about this before, we go around and we're in buildings all the time, and we observe classrooms, and we, you know, we do look fours. And in fact, last week, some of the members are here from the Hamlet Middle School Student Leadership. And we had a conversation, right, about when adults come into your classroom, why are they there? We talked about the importance of that, and that ultimately, the reason for that is so that students can get the best education possible here in Windsocket. So we do these walkthroughs, and what we saw just now from the Hamlet Middle School students, and Ms. Renegaldo, their principal, and the wonderful teachers, is some of the critical thinking, higher-order skills that they're working on, not only in science but across the board. They talked about the three questions: what am I learning? Why am I learning it? How can I demonstrate my learning? We see that across the board here in Windsocket. So I want to congratulate our amazing students from Hamlet Middle School. I want to congratulate our amazing teachers and staff and our amazing administrators for all of the good things that we do and they do in this district. So thank you, and I want to give you a round of applause one more time. I have more good news. As the committee, or some members of the committee, certainly the members of the Wellness Committee, the Health and Wellness Committee, are aware, the fifth graders at Harris Elementary School have been busy working with the University of Rhode Island SNAP Ed on the Students Take Charge project. The goal of this nutrition education intervention was to be more inclusive of the school environment to involve food service, parents, and the Wellness Committee in efforts to improve children's health here in Windsocket. The students learned about Wellness Committee and wrote letters requesting specific fruits and vegetables they would like to see added to the menu at Harris Elementary School. These included strawberries, blueberries, watermelon, celery, corn on the cob, sweet potatoes, cucumbers, and yes, asparagus. Select students performed environment scans in their cafeteria to learn more about the fruits and vegetables offered at lunch. Some interviewed family members for fruit or vegetable-based recipes to taste test in the classroom. The recipes were analyzed by the SNAP Ed and SEDEXO staff and narrowed down to one recipe for the fifth-grade classrooms to taste and vote on whether or not they would like to see it served in the cafeteria. Then the students created promotional posters and wrote persuasive messages about the recipe in fruits and vegetables in general. Thank you, sir. On February 11th, the fifth-grade students, thank you, along with SEDEXO and URI SNAP Ed, hosted the long-awaited school-wide Recipe Day, which Mr. Burke and I unfortunately were unable to attend. It was scheduled, and then it was rescheduled because of a snowstorm, maybe next year, Mr. Burke. And everyone who tasted the recipe cast their vote to answer the question, would you eat fruit and veggie salad again? The majority of the students, eighty-one percent, would eat this recipe again. Furthermore, we found that the students were excited and energized and empowered throughout this process, and that when they were empowered, then, and that they are empowered kids, and they're more likely to make healthy choices both in school and outside of school. So I want to thank URI SNAP Ed, SEDEXO, and the Harris staff, and the amazing Harris students for a great job. And we actually have here a little healthy snack, which was the winning snack from Harris Elementary School. Have one more, and I will...
Sure, Ms. Vice.
I just wanted to say, Dr. McGee has mentioned that the fruit and vegetable salad was the recipe that the students voted for, but there were three other salads in contention as well: zucchini saute, the kale salad, and the fruit salad. But these were also salads that the students had presented and had researched and developed. And I also just wanted to say, in terms of this program, Students Take Charge, one of the fifth graders by the name of Savannah, attended several of our Health and Wellness meetings as the chair of the subcommittee of the Health and Wellness Committee. Savannah had attended us, and she had talked an awful lot about what the students were doing in the Harris School, particularly among the fifth grade. So they learned about what Health and Wellness meetings are all about, as well as working on these particular salads. So again, I commend them for their great work, and like Dr. McGee said, we were disappointed that we were not there on Recipe Day, but we will hopefully be there again. Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt.
But the chef's challenge is coming.
There you go.
So that's big time. Thank you, Vice Chair Burke.
Vice Chair Burke, at least we're getting a taste of these salads tonight. We get something to bring home.
Right.
Finally, Mr. Chairman and members of the school committee, I want to recognize and congratulate Windsocket High School senior Tarek Robinson O'Hagan. Tarek is one of the most decorated Windsocket High School indoor track and field athletes really to ever come out of the city. And really, I'm going to read a little bit about some of his accolades really in the country. It's amazing. He's going to be attending University of Mississippi to continue his track and field career. But Tarek's season consists of so many accomplishments and championships, to name just a few. Tarek was named the New Balance National Champion in the weight throw and National Runner-Up in the shot put, the USA TF Youth Indoor National Champion in the weight throw and shot put, and was named First Team All-American by Track and Field News. He's totaled five national championships, six All-American awards. He ranks number one in the United States in the twelve-pound shot, in the six-kilo shot, in the sixteen-pound shot, the twenty-five-pound weight throw, and the thirty-five-pound weight throw. He ranks number five in the United States all-time in the weight throw, and he ranks number thirteen all-time in the shot put. He also ranks as the second-best high school boys' thrower in the history of the United States. Yes, I did say the history of the United States with a combined weight and shot put distance, and is the only thrower in history to be ranked in the top fifteen all-time in both events. So right here in Windsocket, Rhode Island, Windsocket High School, again, I want to congratulate Tarek for his awards, and I wish him all the luck in the future. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my announcements and recognitions.
Any school committee member have any questions or comments for Dr. McGee? I'll make a motion then to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. We have a second. Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the approval minutes, and I'll make a motion to approve the March ninth, two thousand twenty-two closed session minutes. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus. Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the March ninth, two thousand twenty-two open meeting minutes. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Costa. Any corrections on these minutes? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus. Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into the consent agenda, where I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Costa. Does any school committee member want to take any item out of order or discuss any item within the consent agenda? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus. Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll ask you, Dr. McGee, to give us your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start, as I usually do, with personnel. It's, believe it or not, it's been a busy year with personnel, but from the last meeting to this meeting, it was pretty slow. We've just hired some extracurricular positions and some hourly stipend positions. There were no teaching positions from the last meeting to this meeting. Moving on to my second agenda item, the bullying incident report update. As the committee is aware, we have a new, an improved bullying policy for the Windsocket Education Department. Part of that policy is that two times during the school year, I will present to the committee not specifics around bullying, but I will present to the committee the number of bullying incidents that were reported and the number of incidents that actually were founded. I also am going to add, and I've got quite a bit of information, but I think it's important for me to go through all of this with the committee and with the community, so that they know what each of our schools are doing to try to combat bullying. And it's, when you hear what I have to say, you're going to find that it's pretty impressive with what we're doing as a district to combat bullying. Each committee member has this in your information, with your information, with the number. So I'm going to start with Vernon Heights, and this is from September through January, because the principals are required to provide, myself, twice a year with their reports, and then, as I said earlier, in turn, I will report to the committee. So I'll be reporting again at the end of the year. But this is from September through January. So at Vernon Heights, there was one incident that was reported, and it did not, was not founded to be bullying. Citizens had one incident that was reported. It was found not to be bullying. Coleman had five incidents that were reported. None of them were determined to be bullying. Low Park had four instances, and four of those were indeed bullying. Harris had five reports. Four did occur. Oathier did not have any. Savoy had three that were reported, and those three were found to be bullying. Hamlet Middle School had three that were reported. Two were founded. Villanova did not have any that were reported. The high school did not have any, and the Career Center did not have any. Now, let me go into the information of specifically what schools are doing. And there's a lot, but again, I think it's good because this is positive information that I'm getting out to the community. And again, I'm glad the news is here because folks can see what we're doing in Windsocket to try to provide opportunities for our students to not feel as though they're being harassed or bullied in our school. So I'm going to start with Vernon Heights. Vernon Heights does a variety of things. They have school-wide kindness incentive programs. They have increased active adult supervision in quote-unquote "hotspots" where incidents might occur, such as recess in the cafeteria. Vernon utilizes posters, anti-bullying posters throughout the school. They have a monthly kindness club celebration for students who demonstrate kindness, which is one of the things that they preach at Vernon Heights. There's a kindness rock garden. They have the use of restorative practices and restorative circles. You're going to hear that a lot during my report. Every school, every elementary school, our middle schools and our high school, our high schools in the process of being trained in restorative practices, but all of our schools in grades pre-K through eight are utilizing currently restorative practices. Small group counseling is also utilized at Vernon and the use of behavior interventionist. Committee might be aware that we've added, with SR2 funds over the last year, we've added a good number of behavior interventionists who can provide support to students directly as well as to teachers in the classroom. Coleman, they provide restorative circles in all classrooms with an emphasis on building relationships and restoring warm, in restoring harm when hurtful actions or words have been used towards a student. used towards a student. Using circles as a way for students to communicate with each other as to how actions or words can make someone feel. They have morning meetings, which build community in all classrooms. Caught-being kind coupons are given out to any student who demonstrates any act of kindness throughout the day. At the end of each day, the principal announces one student who was caught being kind to come down to the office to put a kindness leaf up on the kindness tree in the front lobby at Coleman. There's explicit social skill lessons, skills lessons that are taught by the social worker in each of the classrooms at Coleman. There's a school-wide commitment to building a positive learning community and proactively acknowledge kindness every day. At Globe Park, a report's taken and submitted to the superintendent's office, which is what I was provided with for this meeting. The behavior interventionist, social worker, or principal completes any investigation of bullying that is brought forward. The behavior interventionist, social worker, or sometimes the principal will conduct introductory restorative conversations, first with all the individual parties and then, when needed, in groups. Approximately one week later, a follow-up conversation or a check-in occurs with students. The behavior interventionist, the social worker, and principal is debriefed on the current standing of that particular situation. If needed, continued use of restorative meetings occur and interventions are utilized. Approximately one month after that, again, the behavior interventionist, social worker conducts a check-in with students making, who make complaints and are able to determine the next steps in the process. If negative behavior continues, individual behavior interventions are implemented, plans are implemented with daily check-ins and check-outs and work to earn the process. At Harris, principal visits each classroom daily to check on the students, to get the, sort of, the temperature of the building, if you will, to be visible. Social workers mediate when students are having difficulties. Classroom and hall posters regarding anti-bullying are found in the building. Adults set good role models for social behavior, again, through the restorative practices, which is used, as I said, across the district. And they also remind parents to monitor their child's electronic devices. Each of our principals sends home a weekly update to all of their parents, and Mr. Zagradny at Harris includes that in his weekly update to parents. Pothier Citizens Campus, they have been utilizing a no-bully group for about probably five years now. The committee meets once a month. They have solution teams that are created within the school that address any types of issues that might stem from bullying. Lessons on coping skills are held in classrooms and the definition of being mean versus being rude versus bullying are explained to students as well. There's a second steps program that's utilized there through the no-bully program. Positive behavior referrals are given out to students and anti-bullying activities like plays, books, and role-playing are conducted at the Pothier Citizens Campus. At Savoy, restorative practices are utilized. There's six weeks of anti-bullying instruction at Savoy that's done through the health PE teacher and also with teachers in the classroom. Clear expectations are established at the start of each school year around behavior and treating people kindly and respectfully. Positive reinforcements are provided to students through Student of the Month, principal and class rewards, and rewarding good behavior and choices are also utilized at Savoy. At Hamlet, promote school culture and unity. The PBIS team, which works on creating that, that community and that culture in the school. They have team banners that they, that they display that are visible in each of the hallways. There are door decorating contests around kindness and anti-bullying. And there's a, the newest is the buddy picnic table, which has been established outside for students to utilize if they feel as though they need comfort or if they, you know, they need someone up here. At Villanova, there's a kindness challenge. Villanova has participated in the National Bullying Prevention Month. They recognize Unity Day each year. They sign anti-bullying pledges and participate in Spirit Week. Behavior specialists, school counselors participate in mediations of students. There are student mentors at Villanova who work with their peers, and they've created a student-led anti-bullying group at Villanova. The High School and Career Center, they have peer mentors. Peer mediation is conducted with the behavior interventionists as well as social workers. And there's an, a yearly anti-bullying campaign that's created by the student council. And I'm sure there are other things that are happening in our schools to try to create, I hate to say, to create an anti-bullying atmosphere. What we're about here in Winsocket is we're about creating environments where we can establish a sense of community, where people care for one another, take care of one another, and support one another. So with that, Mr. Chairman and members of the school committee, I would be more than happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Can we start with an easy one? On the front page of your report, Dr. McGee, you indicate the number of bullying incidents that have occurred during the period and which bullying events did occur. Can you tell us how and how you get the incidents? How do we identify those, how those identified? And how do we, how are the bullying incidents determined that they did occur?
Great question. So we have a form that either the student will fill out. So if the student feels as though they're, they're being bullied, then the student, or in some cases, the parent, will come forward to the teacher or to the administrator. But whomever they go to, they would be provided with a, a form that is filled out with the administrator or with the social worker or with the behavior interventionist. This form would ask a variety of questions. You know, what, what's the incident? You know, how often has the incident occurred? Who are the other students that are involved in the, in the alleged incident? The principal and/or social worker or behavior interventionist would then investigate. Investigation would be interviewing the alleged victim and interviewing the alleged bully and anyone else who may have been witness to a particular incident. And then the administrator or the social worker or the BI make the determination based on the information that they've been able to collect whether it was founded or not founded. So there are instances where they will, you know, they'll conduct the investigation and they'll determine that, in fact, it wasn't bullying. It was one situation. It was something that, you know, has not happened repeatedly. So there, so there is sort of a, it's not really a checklist, but it's, it's an investigation that they conduct and they make the determination as to whether or not bullying occurred. And literally on that form, there are two boxes, bullying did occur, bullying did not occur. So that's how they, they come to making that determination.
Let me add, the steps that are being taken or the processes that we have at each individual school quite in detail. Is there, is there an outreach to the parents, to guardians in terms of what is being done at the school and to try to get their cooperation as well? Because frankly, without parents, it's all one-sided. I mean, it's all, everything falls in the lap of administrators and teachers and frankly, classmates, but where do parents fit in? There has to be a place for them as well, in my opinion.
So I know that our principals do reach out to families. As I said, they send out weekly updates to families. Many of our principals will include this type of information in that, in those updates to, to families. So that's primarily how they would be made aware of what's happening in the school to create a, an environment that is welcoming and safe.
Anyone have any comments, questions for Dr. McGee? Mrs. Costa.
Is there any, like, more, like, like you said, outreach to the parents as well, but maybe like we could get the teachers when they have their awareness, like, meetings for the bullying? Maybe we could get parents involved somehow with that, possibly? Or there was a subcommittee, I think, that you guys were talking about possibly that might be formed?
So we're, so what we're, so there's a, there's a, there's a committee that has been created. It's a mental health, it's part of the mental health grant that we received three years ago, four years ago. I've met with Gigi DiBello, who is our Project Aware Coordinator, and we are in the process of, instead of creating an anti-bullying subcommittee, we're going to be utilizing this particular committee, which is made up of students and parents. So we're going to combine them.
Anyone else? Chairman? Vice Chair Burke?
Just very briefly, throughout the last several months, there's been a lot of discussion locally and nationally that students had difficulties coming back to the classroom after the pandemic. And because they, some of these difficulties that, the discussion said that they didn't know how to deal, you know, get along with each other. It seems that our statistics that you just presented to us shows us that a lot of that was unfounded. And obviously, there were many, many good examples of our students being able to get along with each other and that the fact that they were coming back from the pandemic and they had been isolated and alone, but they still seemed to be able to work together. And maybe that's because of many programs, I think, that we had to bring students together. So it was kind of heartening to see those, those results in the face of a lot of the discussion that, that occurs locally and nationally.
Thank you. Mr. Burke, we have done a lot. We've done, and I, I want to commend our teachers and staff and our administrators for the hard work that they've put in. It wasn't easy coming back from, from the pandemic because you had students who hadn't seen one another for a while. And think of this, third graders had really not experienced a true, what it's truly like to be in a school. You know, you think of, well, you just come back to school and you just start learning. Well, yeah, but there are, you know, you talk to any, any kindergarten teacher and they'll tell you the half, the first half of the kindergarten year, they're, they're still trying to teach routines and tying shoes and, and, you know, just kids lining up and it's, it's really challenging. So what we've done as a school department, I think, is, you know, the first thing we did is, is last summer, we, we had an incredible summer enrichment opportunity for our students across the district. That brought our kids back in, in person, together. We staffed it with social workers. We staffed it with behavioral intervention, interventionists who could work with our students so that they felt comfortable coming back and not being just them, but having to share things, having to work with others. We worked really hard and it was really successful. In fact, the Commissioner of Education came in, came to Vernon Heights, said that was the best program she had seen in the state, right here in Winsocket. So we've done a lot. This year, we've hired social workers. We've hired interventionists. We've worked really hard. We've worked really hard socially to provide opportunities for our students to come back in and to learn. So we have, and thank you. And I think this is showing that what we've put in is working. Now, it's not perfect. I'm not going to sit here and say it's perfect because I'm sure that there are, are parents out there who would say, well, you know, my son or daughter. But the data is showing that it's working here. And we're going to continue to bolster what we've started to do and to try to improve what we've started to do.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
I just have two questions. The first is, with regard to the restorative practices, there's a parent that I've spoken to that was confused about why their child, who they felt was bullied, was asked to sit down in a meeting with the child that was bullying them. So, and I know that's related to restorative practices and it's voluntary, it's not mandatory, which is what I tried to explain. Is there, has there been an explanation provided to parents, perhaps in the newsletters home from the schools, of what restorative practices are and what they involve? Because this parent said, they just thought this was ridiculous. And I, and I understand where she was coming from because she was hearing from her child. I was made to sit down with the person who was bullying me. And I said, well, I'm sure the child was enforced, they were encouraged to do so because it has to be voluntary on both sides. But perhaps, is that something we could provide to parents about what restorative practices are intended to do and that can happen as part of that process?
Definitely. If it, if it ha, if it has happened, it'll happen again. If it hasn't happened, it will happen. And I think what we'll probably look to do is, is a group of us will sit down, administrators will sit down with, with Ms. DiBello and Ms. Parker, who are, are the two coordinators, really, who are overseeing Project Aware is Ms. DiBello and Ms. Parker is overseeing the restorative practices throughout the district. So I'm sure that we can, with them, put something together that we can have our administrators send out to the families to, to really explain if, if they're still unsure what exactly that is.
Or at least encourage them that if you're not sure what's going on, this is the person you should reach out to, they can explain it to you, whether it's a behavioral interventionist, social worker, or Gigi herself, I don't know who it would be. One other question. No reports at Pothier, no reports at Villanova, none at the high school, and none at the Volk's School. You found that credible? Is that normal to have no reports at those levels, especially at the upper levels?
It is, and I'll explain why. I, I had the same conversation with our secondary administrators. At the, at the secondary level, oftentimes, students don't want to come forward and say that something is happening. We're at the elementary level and to a certain degree, well, to a much greater degree at the middle school level, they're more apt to come forward. But yes, I did have that conversation with them because I did, I noticed that. I thought to myself, okay, that's good, but, you know, it's, it's a little odd. And that's what they responded with, so that, that they're reluctant to come forward. So that's.
Under our bullying policy, just to be clear, it's not just students that have to report the bullying. Parents could report it.
Right.
Or staff can report if they've seen incidents of bullying, they can report it as well, correct?
Absolutely.
And again, there may be a reluctance by them, by the adults, to make that report for various reasons. Any other, any other comments, questions for Dr. McGee? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into the subcommittee reports. We'll start with policy and I'll ask Mrs. Kepiscus and Vice Chair Burke to give us the report.
I always like to ask, Mr. Burke has told me to go ahead.
Your notes, please.
My notes, yes. Policy Subcommittee last met on March 10, 2022. The meeting was called to order at 4:05. Minutes of the prior meeting on February 3 were approved. First item on the agenda besides the minutes was the school committee bylaws. Language was added to clarify the chair's duty to preserve decorum and order. Timeline for these items on the agenda was discussed with the intent to establish a protocol that draft items should be in by the Wednesday before the meeting with a final deadline of Friday before the meeting for items and supporting documentation. Absolute final deadline on Monday before the meeting at 6:59, but we do not want that to be the practice. That is emergencies only. Members will retain the right to table an agenda item if the supporting materials were not received in a timely manner so as to promote, to provide time to review them with consideration that there are certain things that must stay on track, such as vendor payments or personnel decisions, even if the supporting material is untimely for obvious reasons. After discussion, it was clarified that the school committee bylaws do not apply to subcommittees as a matter of practice at the request of Mr. Burke. Language will be added about confidentiality of executive session except when disclosure is required or permitted by law. With regard to issues that have arisen regarding public good and welfare, the policy subcommittee had at its next agenda item a specific policy on this issue, which is actually on our agenda for this evening. This policy will, the policy will clarify the decorum required and the chair's obligation to maintain decorum and order. There's also discussion of intent to add language to be read by the chair before public good and welfare about expectations. There was a long discussion about placing limits on good and welfare in terms of time limits. There was no real objection to restricting each speaker to five minutes. There were concerns about placing a 30-minute time limit on good and welfare as a whole, which our attorneys had recommended, but the subcommittee directed that they wanted this limit removed. Due to the volume of proposed changes, the proposed Winsocket School Committee bylaws will be held until the next policy subcommittee meeting for further review and discussion. The next was a good and welfare policy, which it's now termed something else, but policy is before us tonight and is intended to clarify the rights and obligations of both the committee, by which shall be defined to include the superintendent for this policy only, and the public during public good and welfare. These rights and obligations will be stated by the chair before the good and welfare begins and will include language that the committee and superintendent will not respond to comments during good and welfare for open meeting law issues. The policy is on, was directed to be sent to the full school committee and is on our agenda for discussion and approval tonight. The non-union employee benefits policy was the next item per HR. Certain amendments were required to meet the terms of the new non-union contracts as by policy, non- As by policy, non-union employees get the benefit of items in the union contracts unless the non-union contracts are more favorable. For example, life insurance policies were increased from $20,000 to $30,000 for the unions, so they afford the same occurrence for the non-union employees as well. Some changes are made to fill titles of positions and headers of policy language, as well as the removal of certain employees who are no longer employed by the WBD. There's also a clarification regarding rights to three days for religious observation as well as two personal days. The COVID quarantine language, which was incorporated into all contracts, will be included as part of the non-union benefits policy and permits non-union employees to take COVID pay rather than being required to use their sick days, which brings them in line with the unions. There was also clarification as to whose death permits non-union employees to take bereavement leave. Another issue was whether or not non-union employees would have discretion to carry five unused vacation days, which had been allowed during COVID. HR does not object as long as it is restricted that the days be used before July 31st of that year. After discussion, however, it was decided that policy would be held to permit Dr. McGee and HR to discuss certain issues which arose during the discussion. The last item on our agenda was a policy around a student representative to be part of the school committee. There were really two options, a student rep to provide a report to the committee as a standing agenda item, but with the need that that student provide topics to the superintendent's office for agenda purposes, again, to meet their requirements of the OMA, or a student rep who was on the stage with the committee with the ability to comment but not vote on any agenda items. The sit team at the high school, although it was originally discussed to be part of the selection team, was omitted. The selection will be done by application and interview with the principal, subject to final approval by the superintendent. Mr. Burke discussed whether the student rep should be elected by his or her peers, but there are concerns that might turn into a popularity contest. Mr. Giyo assured the committee that the candidate selected would be prepared by a teacher who would discuss what should and should not be discussed by the student and would also make sure that they were well aware of the limits of the Open Meetings Act. It was also suggested that the student should be encouraged to reach out to other schools for comments and reports for an agenda item at the student's option with, in consultation with the teacher. In other words, the student could reach out to other schools, and if there were school announcements that were to be included, the student rep could ask that an agenda item be added for the student to present those particular reports. The student would need to signal the chair he or she wishes to be recognized, and the student would be instructed in that. The policy, again, was held for further discussion and refining. The meeting was a very long meeting, we adjourned at 6:20. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April 28th, 2022, at 4:00 p.m. in One Socket Middle School, Hamlet's Room 124, and that meeting will be in person. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Did you say when the bylaws are expected to come to the committee?
I would expect that after our next meeting on the 28th, it would be on the next meeting, first meeting in May, that it would likely be on. I think at this point, we're really just fine tuning the language, but there were a lot of changes, and we wanted to make sure the language says what we discussed.
With the student representatives, is that going to be coming to the committee?
It will, but I do not believe, I'm, I'm not sure whether that will be ready for the first meeting in May. I would think that might be held until, hopefully by the last meeting in May, because the intent would be that, oh, I don't think we're going to get someone for the coming year, it would probably be for the next following year.
But at least we'll set the stage and get everything approved for then.
I, I, I don't think, I don't think we should rush through it just so we can get someone appointed by this soon, it probably wouldn't happen until next June, but we can at least have the process in place for whomever that person would be.
Excellent. Anyone else? Anyone else have any comments? I'll make a motion, receive and place on file the policy update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll, we'll go into the health and wellness update. I'll ask Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa to give us the update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Wellness Committee met this past Monday, 4 o'clock here in the Hamlet Middle School. On our agenda, we had a special guest, Dr. Whitney Evans, a psychiatric and human behavior researcher at Brown University, attended our meeting to discuss a program that Brown University is offering to Providence, Central Falls, and One Socket families. The program deals with pediatric weight management program. It's a program that families can sign up for, and it's going to deal with managing the weight of elementary school students. Dr. Evans will be attending some school-related events over the next several, several weeks to try and sign up families to be part of this, this program. We also discussed what was presented tonight about the Students Take Charge program. A parle from the URI SNAP Ed Program came to us and talked about the students and their behaviors and their actions at Harris School, how the fifth graders had the recipe contest, and has, as Dr. McGee mentioned tonight, how the fifth graders chose the fruit and vegetable salad that many of you, I notice, have enjoyed already, and many of you will be enjoying later or tomorrow, since we all had, had items of it. Also, that program, again, was, was worked with Sedexo, and Ashley Plant from Sedexo also discussed and presented to us several things that are going on. We have had an increase in our lunch participation, which is a good thing. Obviously, the breakfast participation in the elementary schools is always very good. Obviously, we struggled to try and get as many middle school kids and high school kids involved in the breakfast program, but she was kind of excited that the lunch program had, had increased. We've also, Sedexo, as I've always said many times, is a, is a company that has a soul because they provide backpacks for students for weekend meals. And, and obviously, those who wish to can sign up for it, and a large number of, of backpacks with, with weekend meals are given to our students as they leave on Friday. This is done by, by Sedexo. There's also a special dinner pilot that's going on. That's, that's right, Citizen Pothier, there's a, a special dinner pilot where takeout dinners are presented to some of the students. So, so once again, we're, we're always making sure that our students are well-fed and receive great nutrition. And I, I, you know, and hats off to Sedexo and your staff for making that possible. We also learned from Sedexo too, and, and Dr. McGee sort of alluded to it, that, that the student chef contest, what is it called, student chef? Future chef, future chef contest will be coming back. It deals with students from grades three to five, who will be presenting recipes to each school, and those recipes then will be voted on, and, and they will be presented to the larger group at, unfortunately, April 28th, Thursday, from 3:30 to 6:00. And Dr. McGee and I have been cho, and Mrs. Costa have been chosen as judges, so what should we do with our policy? Food for thought.
Why don't you serve food?
I was just going to say, how about we eat at policy? Like, keep people there for two and a half hours, we could at least feed them.
That's a good idea.
Anyway, so, Dr. McGee and I and Mrs. Costa will be judges of the return of the Future Chef Contest, which is, it's a lot of fun, and obviously, because of the last few years, we have not been able to have that. And that concluded our health and wellness meeting, and we will meet again Monday, May 23rd, also at Hamlet Middle School at 4:00.
Thank you very much for that. Vice Chair Burke, do you know if Sedexo is going to hold its annual picnic at Werewell Tomb in Mario Park? I mean, that's always been a highlight of the summer.
It hasn't come up yet because I, I still think it's several months away.
Okay.
And remember, a lot of that is federal, federal money.
Not sure.
So I, I guess once she gets more information, I, I think this could be a year where they, they might do that.
They come back, that'd be good. Thank you very much. Any comments for Vice Chair Burke or Mrs. Costa? Then I'll make a motion and receive and place on file the health and wellness update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kepiscus and Mr. Leclerc, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we'll go into conferences and discussions, and I'll ask Mr. Perrier to give us the financial update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under the school committee this evening is the January 2020 fiscal update for the general fund for the One Socket Education Department. Currently, the school department is projecting a $163,000 surplus at the close of fiscal year, June 30th, 2022. On the revenue side, unrestricted state revenue is projected to be $79,000 over budget. The final state aid number was increased in July of 2021, when the final enrollment snapshots were processed to ride. The expense side, all regular salaries are projected to be $1.822 million under budget, when netted with the employee turnover allowance of a little over $1 million, this puts the overall salaries a little under $800,000 under budget. As a reminder, all vacant positions are encumbered, as they'll be paid throughout the end of the year. And as a reminder, the district has approximately $400,000 in ESER funds, budgeted for general fund salary reduction that has now been applied to the general fund, driving that surplus up. Substitute salaries line is currently projected to be 429K under budget. We're still coming in below, as far, we're coming in below salaries just because we are continuing to have trouble filling those positions. We are trying, and, and we're doing better job, but we're, we're coming in under what we've normally performed in the past, pre-pandemic. After-school programs are currently projected to be $130,000, $138,000 over budget at this time, and we still have the option to amend in the ESER II budget to move all those expenses out, but we're going to continue to let this play out and see where we end up at the end of the fiscal year and make those adjustments as we get closer to June. Medical expenses are currently 433K under budget, and we're now at the point of the fiscal year where we have enough expense to, to look on the books to make a, a reasonable estimate as to where we're going to end up. We're going to continue to monitor this going forward, as we always do, and as a reminder, we can tap into our medical reserves that we have on standby if something significant arises between now and June. Additional speech therapists and contracted nursing services have been needed this year beyond what was originally budgeted. This time, we have moved the speech therapist expenses out to ESER II, and we will do the same for contracted nursing services if we get to the end of the year and need that flexibility, much like we're going to do with the after-school programs. We're going to continue to evaluate, hold tight right now, and then make that adjustment as we get closer to the fiscal year, because we do have that flexibility. Remember, in ESER II, we can go backwards. It's not something that needs to be approved by RIDE, it just needs to be an expense that is allowable in ESER II. Behavioral intervention, behavioral interventionists have also been moved to ESER II at this time in the amount of $266, $267,000. And currently, we have expenses on the general fund at this time for both technology building improvements and buses. These were currently transferred off to capital funds at this time, and we also have moved expenses off for furniture and fixtures to ESER II. Final note, the ESER III budget that the school committee approved about a month and a half ago now, that has been approved by the Department of Ed. Right now, we are in a holding pattern. Right now, we are trying to figure out our capital improvement situation. We are working with the State Department of Ed to come up with that number that we're going to hopefully be getting in, in a bond, and once we have a little more clarity on that, we're going to be going back to ESER III and then making an adjustment to account for that, and then resubmitting a new amended grant to RIDE for approval. So at this, this time, we're really not looking to do any major expenses in ESER III, ESER III until next fiscal year, so we do have some time to wait, but when we get those adjustments in, we'll make those appropriate adjustments, we'll figure out what we need to move, and I'll bring back to the school committee a new ESER III budget incorporating that money for our capital improvement plan. This time, if the school committee has any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Perrier, you mentioned bond, the word bond, and this is not a bond that the city is going to go after. This, this is the state, isn't it? Is that correct?
That's correct.
I don't want anyone thinking that in Socket or any portion of, of the district, anybody in our, in our city is going to be going out for a bond, because that, that would cause havoc, especially since we're not, this would cause a raising taxes, and we're not doing that. So this is a bond that is being held, being taken care of by the state or Rhode Island.
That's correct. As I understand it, the city has 0% bonding capacity at this time, as it is. So yes, it would be handled at the state, at the state level.
Since you're moving, moving some costs to ESER II, and I noticed that our salaries are all encumbered, and we do have basically a credit there, so if all those positions are not filled, our, our, our surplus will definitely be in the black. We're definitely going to have a surplus, we just don't know how much it's going to be at this point.
Yes, I'd agree with that, Mr. Chairman. We do have a lot of flexibility this year, it's not really a typical year working with ESER, because we do have the ability to move expenses on and off. The point is, of course, we want to spend our general fund dollars down and hang on to ESER as long as we can, because really looking at the spend through on ESER II this year, we're, we're actually spending through it fairly well. We, we are going to have to take a look at, when we do the amendment for ESER III, what are we going to have to pick up at a ESER II that we're going to run out of money for, for next fiscal year? So, so when we, when we get into that, that ESER, we're really waiting for that, that number, that number that we need to set aside for that state, state, the state bond. And once we get that number, we'll be able to go back, adjust ESER III appropriately, and then make the proper adjustments to ESER II. So that's really the, the shoe that we're waiting for to drop.
The other thing, and the last thing I have, is that these numbers are as of January 31st.
Correct.
But obviously, you're tracking the medical, which is always the number that we're never sure of, because we pay as you go. I would think that that's why you know that we're in good, we're in good stead with only some three months left in, in the, in the school year.
This is, this is a January report, but we take the medical up to what we currently have on file, and we currently have billings through the middle of March, so it's, it's getting comfortable. Again, three months is still a lot of time for things to go wrong, not to be super pessimist on this, but I've seen it before. It only takes a few cases, a few, few situations, as far as medical expenses go, for this to really be blown out of the water. But again, we, we do have additional money to fall back on through our Oped Trust that we have in, we have almost a million dollars in right now, and as well as the additional money we have set aside in our medical pooling account.
And also, we've, you're keeping the medical budget where it is, so it's not like you're depleting the medical budget that's been encumbered, we're just not. We're keeping it there, and we'll see what happens at the end of the year. So we have really three pockets that can take care of any large medical bills that come through in the next three months.
That's correct.
Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the financial update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, I'll ask Ms. Morrell to give us our special education update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, coming up, April 4th until May 27th, the DLM, which is the alternate assessment, on the test for students, kind of like the RICAS, but it's individually, individualized for students that take that. Teachers have been gearing up, taking the tests to be able to give the test to the students, getting themselves certified, and that testing window does open on April 4th. And then the next thing is the American Rescue Plan Grant is due on March 28th. I've been working very closely with administrators, teachers, SLPs, OTs, and parents to collect ideas and supports for the students in the special education classrooms. The grant itself is supposed to help support students through COVID loss. I've been able to get a lot of ideas through all the people I've listed. Most of the funds are going to go for sensory equipment, updating sensory spaces in the classroom, in buildings, updating some furniture, and providing a before and after-school group for speech and OT services, as well as some technology needs in our pre-K classrooms. We also have the special education enrollment numbers. This is a snapshot as of March 17th. Our numbers have gone up slightly. We are now at 27.31% of our total enrollment population of students that are, are receiving services from pre-K to 12 in our schools. Do you have any questions?
Any comments, questions from Ms. Morrell? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a special education update. Do we have a second? Second by Vice Chair Burke. Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have no unfinished business, so we'll go into new business. First item is I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the Rhode Island Student Survey, R-I-S-S. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Chairman Borje. Committee has in front of it the Rhode Island Student Survey request. The Rhode Island Student Survey is from the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Developmental Disabilities and Hospitals. RIDE and the Department of Health support the administration of this survey throughout Rhode Island, in secondary schools, middle schools, and high schools. This is something that has been utilized in Wensocket before. I believe it's every other year, but I could be wrong. I know there are a couple of different surveys that are implemented, and this is something that just has to have the, each time, each year it is implemented, the school committee and superintendent just have to sign off on this survey. We have here with us Lisa Carsoferro, who is the Director of the Blackstone Valley Prevention Coalition, if the committee has any questions specific to the survey. But again, this is a survey that is utilized, has been utilized in our middle schools and high school. It is voluntary. It is, and every student does not have to take it. But I know Ms. Carsoferro could answer any questions that the committee may have this evening.
I do have some thoughts and comments on this. I wonder how many students, first of all, take it? And second, I can't see students answering every single question, because some of these questions, if you answer them, they're almost damning. Did you take drugs? Did you try to commit suicide? Have you been, there's bullying questions, fine, but there are some questions in here that I don't see students going, sure, I'm going to volunteer that information, even though it's, I don't, you know, I don't put my name down, but somebody's going to know that we've got incidents, you carry weapons, is there any problems? Certain problems, though, that I discussed in here, I just don't see how students are really, would get involved in answering all the questions. I really don't. So Lisa, would you please come to the podium?
Mr. Chairman, before she speaks?
Yes.
If you read in the directions, it says if any of the questions make you uncomfortable, you don't need to answer them. So again, if a question is uncomfortable to the student, they just leave it blank.
And I, Vice Chair Burke, I hear you, but I mean, also, it's like, if I leave it blank, then I know folks that get my survey know I got a problem with this.
And nobody knows who you are. This is all voluntary, it's all anonymous, and I know we've been, we've been, we've been doing it for
Oh, I know.
Many, many years. And Mrs. Costaferro is there, and I think the big question you may want to ask her is, what is this information used for?
I'm confused.
I'm here to help, Paul. Good evening.
Evening.
Chairman Borje, and the school committee, and Dr. McGee, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I'm here with Dr. Andrea Paiva. She is from URI. She is responsible for all the administration throughout the schools. You are correct, Dr. McGee, this is every other year, a survey, and it is entirely voluntary and entirely anonymous. Students can skip the questions that they do not feel comfortable with. The information is important, because as you know, without data, it's really difficult to do any kind of specific planning. So with the data, it certainly helps us to provide activities and services for youth after school, and then the school can also use the data for, in school services that are necessary. So to answer your question, Mr. Borje, the students don't have to answer those questions that they are uncomfortable with, and certainly, as we look at them, we may feel uncomfortable, but students these days really deal with all of these issues that are here. They see things, they hear things, they talk about things with their friends, so we're trying to capture all of that information to inform us in the decisions and planning that we make. So what may appear uncomfortable for us in a questionnaire, the students may talk about that regularly. We just don't know, we're not in those circles. So I think it's important to hear that from them, instead of having us make decisions on what we believe they think and feel and hear and how they act. So, and that is the reason why we ask that these surveys be provided in the school and be administered, because it's important to hear from them.
May I ask you, what percentage of our student population, or you have a percentage of how many students volunteer?
COVID, only Hamlet was able to participate due to the distance learning, and we actually were not able to use any of that data, just because it was a very low participation, which was mostly through distance learning. In 2018, I actually just looked up the numbers, we had over 90% of all middle school students participate, so in each grade. We're very consistent about making sure that there's over 60% participation in each grade, or else that data is not reported, because it's not valid. So 90% in the middle school, and then we surveyed in 2018, ninth, 10th, and 11th graders, and those were around 70 to 80%, which is pretty consistent that the older they are, like you said, they may be less willing to participate, but still well over the 60% threshold that we have. The only one that fell below 60% and were not included in 2018 were the 12th graders. And sometimes, we can imagine that they're sometimes not in school that day, or just don't really, they've kind of checked out by the spring, so they don't want to do that. But this, very similar rates in 2016 for Wensocket, actually one of the highest in the entire state as far as participation, and as far as an administration perspective, working with the administration who set it up, it's always been phenomenal, very organized, and I think that really leads to that participation rate being what it is.
Ask another follow-up question, and I don't want, obviously, identify anything, any body, but of the participants, did you find that most of the questions were answered?
Yes, so we have very little missing data overall. What we find is throughout, so you're seeing a hard copy of it, it's actually electronic online survey, and there are skip patterns in there. So if they were forced in any way, which they're not, everything is optional, they would have quite a few questions to answer here, but questions at the beginning of each substance, the section for each substance, if they say no, they've never used, they are skipped all of those other questions. So really, when it comes down to it, they're answering, you know, maybe half of what you actually see in that packet. But overall, people, you know, most students are very receptive to answering it. I'm a data person, so we like to look across districts just generally, and we see about the same missing data rate across any district, so it's not like we see any particular district wanting to not answer certain questions. We don't see differences by question either. So the substance use questions are answered just in the same amount as the bullying and some of those other questions, even demographics, they're very open to answering those questions.
Thank you. Excellent. Any other comments or questions? Vice Chair Burke?
Mr. Chairman, for a second time, is that all right?
Yes, of course.
This survey is only given to the middle school and the high school students. That's important, I think, for people to know. My second question is, the information goes to URI or RIDE? Where does it go?
I'll let you know the process. So URI, we administer the survey. Essentially, I'm in charge of making sure that it's a secure data collection, everything is HIPAA compliant on the software that we use. I download the data, and it goes right to BHDDH. They have a team that analyzes the data there. They are the ones in charge of everything to do with reporting now, so.
You spell out your acronym?
Sorry, can you say it? Because I mess it up every time.
It's the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Developmental Disabilities and Hospital.
I've only had to see that for seven years, and I keep messing it up. So now, they've taken, they've taken all the reporting in-house, so they do the data collection. They're very diligent about masking of data, meaning that when you get the report for Wensocket, if there are fewer than 10 people in a cell, so if fewer than 10 students report a particular response, they will mask that number, so no one can see. Nothing is crossed with something like demographics, which is often worrisome, that if you take a demographic, like race or gender, and cross that with substance use, you may be able to identify students, because there may be a very small number of students of that particular category, so they do not do that, and anything that's reported is masked if it's below a threshold.
Vice Chair Burke, go right ahead.
And what's the timeline for this? When are the students going to be taking it, and do you speak to the principals to get this done?
Anytime after approval, we can begin the process and the signing off of all the approvals, and then we can begin scheduling, when it's convenient for the schools.
We offer it all the way up until June, so whatever works. I know there's other testing going on. Typically, as soon as the approvals come in, the principal forms are given, there's a contact person, and as soon as those are handed in, my lab will, within 24 hours, reach out to that contact person, so they can get the ball rolling and figure out what to do with this, and they completely come up with the schedule. Do they do it in one day? Do they do it over the course of a week? So it's very flexible, and we work with that contact person that the principal appoints, each principal appoints.
Do you make that presentation to the schools, or how do the principals know this is coming up?
Yeah, so I communicate with them. I've already communicated to them that we received the request. So yeah, so the way we've done it in the past is, you know, we'll just coordinate, you know, through URI.
Anyone else?
There are one question.
Capiscus.
Parental consent required?
So there is passive consent, so we set up a Google form that we share with the principal or whoever that contact person is. We used to do a paper copy, but we know kids do not bring them home, so it's essentially an opt-out form, so you do not require every person to bring them back, but this Google form can be sent out ahead of the survey, whether it be a week or two weeks, whatever the school decides, and I add that person, that contact person, as a collaborator on the Google form, so they can see, and only they can see, which students have been opted out by their parents, and then the school coordinates how to take them out of the surveying process that day.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. LeClaire?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the memorandum of understanding between the Wensocket Education Department and Rivers Edge Arts. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a memorandum of understanding between the Wensocket Education Department and the Rivers Edge Arts, which is located here on Second Avenue in Wensocket. Dr. Kristen Williams is here, who is the Executive Director of Rivers Edge, but this is an MOU that we have had, and it's just, we're just continuing the MOU with Rivers Edge, and it just provides opportunities for students within the community, students in our schools, to have robust opportunities at Rivers Edge. I'm not sure, Dr. Williams, if you wanted to add anything specific with respect to any potential changes, although I don't believe there are any changes to the continuation
Could you speak louder, please, or into the mic? We can't hear you.
Did it go on? Yep. So that we can create expanded learning opportunities that involve an industry mentor, a teacher of record, and the student actually earns either elective and/or academic core credits in a variety of the different disciplines. So really, we're trying to continue that program.
Ms. LeClaire?
Is the continuing program as we've had in the past?
Yes. There's nothing there.
Hey, Burke, did you have a comment? No. Okay. Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiscus?
Yes.
Mr. LeClaire?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the WSC response to RIDE request for public comment regarding proposed changes to secondary regulations. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Capiscus and Vice Chair Burke. Oh, and me. Mrs. Capiscus, please.
As everyone knows, I've been beating the drums about the proposed changes to the secondary regulations with regard to graduation requirements, and some concerns that I had about them, and Mr. Chair Borje suggested that perhaps the school committee could create a resolution as its form of public comment with regard to the concerns that have been raised. I raised concerns, basically, I learned of these proposed regulations as a member of the RICAC round Special Education Advisory Committee, and I've raised the concerns with our own individual Special Education Advisory Committee, which I chair, and I raised them here, and I raised them any opportunity I have. There are public meetings coming up. I was just looking for the date, and I couldn't find it, for the upcoming meeting at Wensocket Harris Public Library, which is going to be from 4 till 6. I have a conflict, I believe it's on a Monday, but I'm going to do my best to resolve my conflicts, that I can be there to speak. The first public meeting was just held in Warwick on the 22nd, and there were parents there that expressed their opposition or concerns with regard to the regulations. I had sent some summary language to our attorneys to ask them to, give them a jumping off point to prepare a resolution with regard to our concerns, and they relate generally to the fact that two foreign languages are not going to be required of all students to make them ready for admission. The plan was to look at the admission requirements for Rhode Island College and URI, that our students would comply with those requirements, without any consideration to the fact that many students enter the workforce, enter the military, or go to a two-year college, which require some of these things, in particular, two years of a foreign language. And for some years, for some of our students at-risk, or special ed, or MLL learners, that two years of a foreign language could be prohibitive to them graduating. It's just a very onerous burden to put on our students who may already be at risk and struggling. As my son says to me, he has dyslexia, and he said, "I have trouble enough learning how to read and write in English, don't make me learn a foreign language too." So, and that speaks to the special ed community. And also, there's a removal of a fine arts requirement, so there's no music requirement, there's no art requirement. Rhyme of, the Music Educators Association has been very vocal about their opposition to that. I've been very vocal at all the committees I sit on, that now, as part of your graduation requirement, every student is required to submit a FAFSA. If you're not going to college, why do I have to do a financial disclosure form asking for financial aid for college? That's a requirement of graduation, not that I'm going to a post-secondary school. Of graduation, I have to do that FAFSA, which to me is overkill. So basically, that's where the focuses were in this particular resolution, were around those areas, and the particularly devastating effect it will have on certain segments of our community, at-risk students, students with IEPs and 504s, and students who are multiple-language learners.
Very much. Since we discussed this, I've noted that throughout the district, not our district, but all the districts, that at least two or three school committees have generated the same kind of resolution, speaking against the same things that we're talking about. It's just an undue burden on our students, and some of the requirements are crazy, ridiculous. Whoever sat at the desk that come up with these really weren't thinking about the students or their parents. So to me, this is a good resolution that we should all vote on and approve. So to me, this is a good resolution that we should all vote on and approve and sign. Are there any other comments? Mr. Leclerc?
I have one. Lynn, relative to section number three, you have section 2.3.1B as one of your issues. Is that pointing to the right section as far as core proficiencies, where the arts is eliminated? Further down, it looks like it might be under, hold on. 2.31C is what you're looking to point to. Could be wrong.
I didn't draft the resolution, so.
All right. B just says 20, it just needs 20 credits, whereas C actually lists the course credits that must include the following content areas.
Caroline, are you checking this out too? Please?
Says English, math, science.
Can we just, for a sound, put in a new letter? That's all we need to do. If it's right.
Number three points to 2.31B relative to
Eliminating arts?
Eliminating arts. Whereas further down, you have a listing of all the changes being made, and then 2.31C designates what core courses you need to take. The arts is four credits of English Language Arts and Science, but it doesn't have Fine Arts in there. List them as the three additional credits you can use.
Fortunately, I don't have my notes with me, or I'd be able to find it right away, because, but they're my notes for a different committee, so I don't have them with me.
You don't have these, the blues?
I have, I have the ones that Caroline sent us, but I don't have mine that are notated.
Got it. What say you, Caroline?
On the second page, you list section, number three, talks about core arts, and it lists sections 2.31B. At the end of our, on our attachment that was sent out to us, the last, was it, five, six, seven pages, list the actual changes that are being made, correct? Shows the blues and all the colors that change all the changes. If you follow that all the way down.
Looking at this.
Regulation, yup.
The board, it says Board of Education titles, it's all in blue, marked up.
Follow that all the way down to section 2.31B. That just says, 20 credits must include a demonstration of proficiency, blah, 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 blah. But C actually lists the actual credits that you actually need. The arts, is that what you're saying? All right. That's fine, just wanted to make sure.
Are we good? All good.
Very much.
Any other comments?
Chairman?
Vice Chair Burke?
The information about rural language, requirement for the language, I mean, learning the rural language is not a bad thing, I should say that. However, for our school system, I think we talked about this already, that this could have an impact on the courses that our career students take, the socket area career students take, because they don't have a lot of wiggle room in their schedule, because they're taking the career students. So that's another reason, particularly for us, why this could be a problem.
Schedule will be so burdened, they're going to miss some of the things, some of the students are going to miss some items, and others are going to have a schedule that's going to be crushing. And yet, like Mrs. Capiscus, why do you have to do a FAFSA? You're not going to college. And that's a pain, just to do that.
You can get a waiver, but it's up to the commissioner whether or not she grants it.
Shouldn't have a waiver to graduate. Any other comments?
Chairman?
If I could, Mrs. Capiscus, so April 4th is the date of the public comment, and it's going to be at the Harris Library from 4 to 6.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
We do have the originals, so that we can sign it after the meeting. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve public comment policy for first passage. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Costa. Mrs. Capiscus?
I provided a summary during my policy subcommittee report. We have the actual policy, it's called public comment during good and welfare. That's the language that was added, I couldn't remember off the top of my head. And it basically talks about essentially decorum, order, behavior of the speakers and of the committee, that the chair will instruct the public who speaks that we will not respond, because people seem to get angered when we don't respond, but we really can't, if it's not on our agenda, we can't discuss it, or it's a potential violation of the OMA. So, and also the five-minute limit, but we've eliminated a limit totally on good and welfare, that good and welfare, as many speakers who want to speak for five minutes will be able to speak, it's not a 30-minute limit, so there's only six speakers. That was a concern that a lot of the members of the policy subcommittee had. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add, Mr. Burke, on policy?
Well, the important thing is that the good and welfare section of our agenda, we welcome input from the public. I mean, we're not trying to curtail any input from the public, but we need to, we need to control, basically, some decorum in the presentations of good and welfare to the school committee. So this is why we've made this an important issue. We've controlled it with five minutes, which should be plenty, and obviously, some exceptions can be made as necessary. And yet, we've also, without limiting First Amendment rights, without limiting that, that behavior of good and welfare must, is disruptive, prohibit, okay, let me read this. Public comment that includes disclosure of confidential or personal information is not permitted. In addition, public comment that amounts to disruptive conduct is prohibited. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, the following: the use of profanity or vulgarity, discriminatory or deplimentary statements, and finally, threats directed at others or committee members, or incitement to gauge disruptive conduct. Seems to cover the reason for trying to have some input into retaining a good, good and welfare segment to our agenda.
It was originally intended to include this language in our bylaws, but Caroline advised that it would probably be better as a standalone policy, and that's why it's being presented to as a separate policy with regard to public speech at good and welfare.
Appreciate that it's a separate policy before us, because if it's in the bylaws, it's buried in the bylaws. This way, it's going to stand out, and as Vice Chair Burke said, we welcome public comment, we love public comment, but we want it, the comment should be addressed through the committee, through the chair, and it should be in good taste, there should be no attacks on members of the committee, there should be no disruption, and we speak from experience, because this happened not too long ago, where we had all those items. But now, we are looking to codify this into its own separate policy, and frankly, any comments that we hear from the public, from the community, we won't be discussing that that night if it's not on our agenda. If it's not on our agenda, we're not going to discuss it, but we can take those comments and maybe put, if we think they're important enough to warrant an item on our agenda, we will do that for future meetings, so that your comments, community, are going to be, will be heard, and we will be acting upon them if deemed necessary. So I think this new policy is very important, and frankly, we're not the only public body in town, and the city that's doing this, the city council, has very similar rules with regards to public comment. So we are not going to be the only body, public body that will be doing the same. Any comments? Any other comments? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
This motion to approve the public comment policy has gone through for first passage unanimously. I believe that covers all the items on our agenda, so I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:40 PM. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.